May 12th, City Council Meeting is called to order. We have our invocation by Reverend OC Odin Jr., Pastor Antioch Missionary Baptist Church, Fairfield, Alabama, followed by our pledge of allegiance by Counselor Marcus Lundey Jr. from District 9. Please stand.
Let us bow our hearts, please. God our Father, we are grateful and thankful unto you for another expression of your loving kindness and your tender mercies. We do thank you for being our God. We thank you for your Son, Jesus Christ, and we thank you for the ministry of the Holy Spirit. And we come now asking thy blessings upon this City Council meeting. We pray for President Austin. We pray for Mayor Baer. We pray for each councilperson. We pray for the legal department, every staff member. God, we pray for every citizen. We lift them up and pray that every decision that is made by this council, by the mayor, will be according to your will and according to your way, that they will trust you in every decision. They will not lean to their own understanding, but in all their ways, they will acknowledge you and your promise to direct their path. Bless each community. Bless Birmingham. And God will be careful to give you the praise, the glory, the honor. And we pray for a spirit of solidarity as we pray this in that perfect, powerful, and precious name of him who gave his life, that we might all have life. It's in Jesus' name we pray, and we thank you and all the people of God said.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call roll, Mr. Clerk. Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Hoyt.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Lundey. Councilmember Parker. Good morning. Councilmember Rafferty. President Pro Tim Robertson. Councilmember Scales.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Tyson. President Austin.
President, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The minutes from February 24th, we have a motion on those minutes through March 10. Lundey, Abbott.
All right, voting should be open. Councilmember Tyson. Okay, thank you. That vote should be up, Mr. President.
That passes. Let's move with the consideration of consent agenda, Mr. Clerk.
Okay. All right, the consent agenda starts on page two. Bear with me, Mr. President. I have to click the items myself right now. We have items two and three and four on consent. On page three, we have items five, as well as items seven, eight, and nine on consent. Page four, we have items 10 through 13 on consent. Page five, we have item number 14 on consent. Skip over to page six, we have items 20 and 21 on consent. Page seven, we have item number 24 on consent. Page eight, we have items 27 and 28 on consent. Page nine, we have items 29 and 30 on consent. And I think that concludes the consent agenda.
Okay. We have one addendum item, it's the travel addendum. Want to add that to the consent agenda, Mr. Clerk?
Uh, I think she's got more than one, several travels.
Do you have them ready? Will we just add when we have them?
Okay.
We'll get those, we'll do those later. Counselor Abbott.
Yes, I had some items I wanted to add to consent. The first one is item 15 on page five. The next one is item 16 on page five.
Item 16?
What are we doing here?
What now?
What are we doing here?
This is the parking deck.
This is the parking.
Oh, the parking deck, okay. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so 16 will remain.
Then, on page six, item 19.
Okay.
On page seven, item 23.
Mr. President, it should be Director of Public, uh, Planning, Engineering and Permits instead of IMS on this item.
Okay, got it. Item 23. P E P.
Then on page nine, item 31. And that's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Counselor Hoyt?
Yes, I'd like to consent item 17 and 22.
What is it?
Object.
Those are going to, um, we want to recommend those to committee at home. Those are U A B items. Go ahead, counsel.
You said 17 and what?
22. There's an objection to those items. Do you have any more?
Okay. 25, I want to take that off consent. No. Did they put it on consent?
It's not on consent.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's all I have right now.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Counselor Abbott?
I forgot, I forgot item 33 on page 10 to put on consent.
Item 33? Oh, yeah, yes.
I understand.
Yes. Page 10. That is it, counsel. Counselor Scales?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, item number 32, please, on page nine.
Object.
Objected to that. We've got, um, item 32, item 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, and item 40 that are addendums. These are travel addendums except for item 40, which is a resolution of intent to support U A B, and we'll talk about that.
Okay. So was item 25 added?
It's not on consent.
Okay, are we able to add it?
There's an objection. There's an objection.
All right.
That it?
Yes, sir.
All right. Are there any members of public who wish to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda marked as a public hearing? You may now approach the podium. There any member of the public who wishes to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda and marked as a public hearing, you may now approach the podium. We have a mover and a second on the consent agenda.
I move approval.
My second, Mr. President. What do we do with the, uh, all those addendums? Did we put any on consent?
No.
We did not? Okay.
No.
Can we get copies of those addendums?
You have.
Oh, he just brought them in here, okay.
Who, who did, who made the motion?
Parker, Abbott.
Mr. President?
Abbott, Parker.
Abbott, Parker.
I, I wanted to speak to the motion, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Okay, on item, um, 34, with all due respect, these are travels that have already occurred. So are we, do we have an objection to taking up what's already been paid for?
Fine, we'll just take it, we'll take it up at 100.
So he's going to have to read all of these?
Yes.
Well, Mr. President, if you don't mind, uh, I want to note this on item 33 that I was asking for, um, that, that, that piece of travel is coming out of our office budget. I just wanted to make sure that all councilmen are aware of that.
That's fine. That's not, 33 is, you're talking about 32. I got you. Thank you. Ready to vote, Mr. Clerk?
Okay. Voting should be open now. That vote should be up, Mr. Chair.
That item passes. Um, the consent agenda passes. Mr. Clerk, go ahead and take up item 32, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39.
Okay, give me one second to load. 37, 38, 39. One second.
32, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39.
Okay.
Hey, how's your travel budget doing, John? How's your travel budget doing?
Not so bad.
Oh, that's true.
I don't know. It's this year.
I thought it was last year.
All right, I got one more and I'll be done. All right, 32. Item 32 is on page nine. A resolution approving the following advanced expense accounts. Kimberly Jenkins, Committee Assistant City Council, Houston, Texas, $1,590.26, made of 20th through the 22nd, 2015, to attend Neighborhood USA Conference. Bakari Malden, Administrative Assistant to the Mayor, Mayor's Office, Washington DC, $1,422.91, made of 28th through the 30th, 2015, to attend African American Mayor's Conference. If you'll make that correction on your agenda, make that 2015. Chad Mitchell, Deputy Administrator, City Council, Salt Lake City, Utah, $2,018.56, June the 9th through the 13th, 2015, to attend National League of Cities Leadership Meetings. Kimberly Rafferty, Counselor, City Council, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, $944.15, made of 16th through the 19th, 2015, to attend the Alabama League of Municipalities Convention. Kimberly Rafferty, Counselor, City Council, Salt Lake City, Utah, $2,131.24, June the 9th through 13th, 2015, to attend National League of Cities Leadership Meetings. Renee Rotan, Administrative Assistant, Mayor's Office, Atlanta, Georgia, $955, made of 13th through the 17th, 2015, to attend American Institute of Architects Diversity Council Convention. James Robertson, Counsel, Pro Tim, City Council, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, $944.2, made of 16th through the 19th, 2015, to attend the Alabama League of Municipalities Con- Convention. The Senator Scales, Counsel, City Council, Cambridge, Massachusetts, $7,400, February 7th through the 12th, 2016, to attend Harvard Kennedy School of Executive Education, Leading Economic Growth. Item 34. A resolution approving the following expense accounts. Camilla Gray, Committee Assistant, City Council, Prattville, Alabama, $219.10, March 26th through the 28th, 2015, to attend council retreat. Kimberly Jenkins, Committee Assistant, City Council, Washington District, Columbia, $1,930.57, March 8th through the 11th, 2015, to attend National League of Cities Congressional City Conference. Marcus Lundey, Counsel, City Council, Prattville, Alabama, $219.10, March 26th through the 28th, 2015, to attend council retreat. Item 35. A resolution approving the following expense accounts. Melissa Crabtree, Public Information Officer, City Council, Prattville, Alabama, $188.74, March 27th through the 28th, 2015, to attend the council retreat. Eric Fancher, Junior Assistant to the Mayor, Mayor's Office, Atlanta, Georgia, $285.90, January 21st through the 22nd, 2015, to attend the federal inter-agency meeting. Jarvis Patton, Chief of Operations, Mayor's Office, Tampa, Florida, $1,216.30, April the 21st through the 24th, 2015, to attend National Formal Black Public Administrators, 2015, Leadership Charting the Course to the Future Forum. William Parker, Counsel, City Council, Prattville, Alabama, $219.10, March 26th through the 28th, 2015, to attend council retreat. Kimberly Rafferty, Counsel, City Council, New Orleans, Louisiana, $725.40, March 10th through the 12th, 2015, to attend International Council Shopping Centers Gulf Coast Conference. Kimberly Rafferty, Counsel, City Council, Montgomery, Alabama, $594.49, March 7th through the 9th, 2015, to attend Alabama League of Municipalis- Municipal Legislative Advocacy and Alabama Transit Symposium. Brian Wallace, Public Information Officer, City Council, Prattville, Alabama, $142.75, March 26th and the 27th, 2015, to attend council retreat. Was it 36? Item 36. A resolution approving the itemized expense accounts of city's employees. Item 37. A resolution approving the itemized expense of city employees. Item 38. A resolution approving the advanced expense accounts of city employees. And item 39. A resolution approving the following advanced accounts of city employees. Jonathan Austin, Counselor, I'm not employees, I'm sorry. Jonathan Austin, Counsel, President, City Council, Paris, France, Stuttgart, Germany, $6,925.73, June 13th through the 19th, 2015, to attend 2015 Parish Air Show. Camilla Gray, Committee Assistant, City Council, Houston, Texas, $2,424.61, made of 19th through the 24th, 2015, to attend Neighborhood USA Conference. Courtney Hunter, Chief of Staff, City Council, Paris, France, Stuttgart, Germany, $6,524.49, June the 12th through the 19th, 2015, to attend 2015 Parish Air Show. Cheryl Kitty, Administrator, City Council, Paris, France, Stuttgart, Germany, $5,264.20, June the 12th through the 19th, 2015, to attend 2015 Parked Air Show. Kira Morrow, Public Information Officer, City Council, Houston, Texas, $2,424.61, made of 19th through the 24th, 2015, to attend Neighborhood USA. April Odom, Director of Communication, Mayor's Office, Paris, France, Stuttgart, Germany, $6,372.31, June the 12th through the, uh, 2015, to attend 2015 Parish Air Show. Did you leave out 40, I'm sorry? Was 40 left out, Mr. President?
Yeah, that was left off. We have a mover and a second.
Who was that? Lundey?
Lundey, Parker.
Parker? Voting should be open. That vote should be up, Mr. Chair.
That item passes. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Would you like to go? I have a-
Item two?
Board appointment.
You do?
Yeah.
All right.
Um, Birmingham Water Works, uh, A. Jackie Robinson III. Term expires for 11, 2015. It's a six-year term and it is under the Administration Committee.
Okay. All right. This, um, is item one, Mr. Clerk.
Item one? All right, item one. Item one. An ordinance to further amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham, case number ZAC 2015-3, to change zone district boundaries from QB, QB2 Qualified General Business District and R8 Planned Residential District to R2 Single Family Residential District filed by the City of Birmingham Department of Planning, Engineering and Permit for the properties located at 951, 1050, 1105, 1109, 1129, 1141, 1201, 1221, Springville Road and 950 Fran Drive, situated in northeast quarter of section 30 Township 16 South, 1 West and southeast quarter of section 30 Township 16 South, 1 West. In the hearing of all ownership parties, this is the second reading.
Counselor Abbott?
Motion?
Uh, yes, Mr. Paul. I move approval.
Abbott, Parker.
Mr. Gambrell, would you read our case?
Sure thing. Uh, this is ZAC 2015, number three, and it is a request to revert the zoning of the subject properties from its 1988 rezoning classification, QB2 Qualified General Business District, R8 Planned Residential District, to R2 Single Family. Uh, the subject properties are located in multi-acre parcels on the south side of Springville Road between Eldorado Drive and Ware Boulevard in the Spring Lake neighborhood. Huffman High School, as well as multiple family apartments zoned R8, are located north of the property across Springville Road, while southeast and west of the property are single-family homes zoned R2. Uh, the subject property currently consists of vacant lots, two vacant single-family houses, and a vacant daycare. The subject properties were initially rezoned from R2 Single Family District to R8 Planned Residential District and QB2 Qualified General Business District, Business District in case Z7988, ordinance number 1393G, with several Q conditions. Uh, the initial applicants of the 88 rezoning case desired to rezone the 300 to 400 feet off of Springville Road as general commercial and a larger portion of the property, which abut single-family residential use, was proposed for residential use. However, development of the site did not play, take place as intended. Uh, there were restrictive covenants and a unified development plan were required by the QB2 portion of the zoning ordinance, or the, uh, the ordinance that rezoned the property. However, uh, there's no evidence that the restrictive covenants or unified development plan were ever certified and recorded. After unsuccessful attempts to have all property owners come together to discuss proposed development plan and covenants on the property, combined with current proposal from one owner to construct a church and a portion of the property decided, the city has decided to take action in this case. The City of Birmingham Planning Staff, a consultation with the city's legal department, determined that the conditions opposed by the zoning case and the subsequent city ordinance adopting it, which required that the QB2 General Qualified Business District zoning be in accordance with the Unified Development Plan and covenants agreed to by the applicant and the Neighborhood Association, has not been met. Therefore, the rezoning of the properties are invalid and the planning staff is requesting the City Council to consider a zoning case to revert the property from QB2 R8, um, to its prior zoning, which was R2 Single Family District. If the subject rezoning request is approved by the City Council, any development plan for the site must meet the standard requirements for R2 Single Family District. The city's long-range land use plan identifies the property as residential low and as parks and recreation. At a regular scheduled meeting on March 17, 2015, the zoning advisory committee voted to recommend approval of this rezoning. The Planning and Zoning Committee of the City Council voted to approve this case at its regular scheduled meeting on March 24, 2015, and the applicant met with the Spring Lake Neighborhood Association at its regular scheduled meeting on April 2, 2015, and they voted four to zero to approve the rezoning. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Gambrell. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for or against this item? Mr. President, I believe we're ready to vote.
Counselor Scales wants to speak to you.
Oh, Counselor Scales?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, because this is in District 1. Wanted to get a, just a little bit more understanding. I'm sure you can tell I was honed in on every word you said. So I gather that, obviously, the, I know what the neighborhood voted, and I normally will not go against the neighborhood, uh, but it's, it's to make it back, single family, and I see these, uh, addresses along Springville Road. Give me a little bit more understanding of what this is today.
What's currently there?
Yeah, but I'm saying this undeveloped business, obviously, it, it didn't complete. That's what I heard.
Right. Yeah, there's, you know, currently on the site, there are three single-family homes. One had been used as a daycare in the past, but it's currently vacant, and then the two houses that are still there are currently vacant. Otherwise, it's just vacant property. And primarily, it's, it's pretty steep hillside.
Right.
Uh, really, you know, I'm, I'm surprised it was zoned for commercial in the first place. Uh, you know, it's pretty much surrounded by residential, and now-
Right.
You know, the Huffman School across the street, you know, took over, you know, a site that used to be commercial, and so it's even less commercial than it was in the past, and, uh, um, you know, like I say, the, uh, the original rezoning case included those Qs, and, you know, basically, those Qs are kind of holding up anything that could happen there in the future. You know, there's currently somebody who wants to buy a piece of property, build a church, but they can't do it because this case is kind of tied up, mired in, you know, what was never finished in the first place. You know, the unified development plan and the restrictive covenants were never, um, certified and recorded. And so, and those were requirements of the Q. And since those have not been fulfilled, the Q's not been fulfilled, we're saying basically that this rezoning of the property is null and void. It just doesn't, you know, it doesn't have any status because it, it, the Q's weren't completed.
Right. So then, let me ask you this. This is just for future development. Then, those properties, based along where Fran Drive is, you're right, it is surrounded by residential properties?
Right.
It, it didn't seem like you could build anything in terms of, uh, any kind of development there, any way that would make sense. Am I right?
Uh, well, I mean, you know, I'm sure some development, but, you know, I don't know. There, and that's the problem. There hasn't been, you know, the unified development plan, you know, there was, there's nothing that's been established since that rezoning case that would satisfy those Qs. Um, you know, I'm sure the property could develop in some way. Uh, you know, if we approve this, you know, it would be R2 property, and it would only be able to be single-family homes, or a church, or a school, something like that.
But it can be a church or a school.
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm very, yeah, we need a lot of economic development in District 1, but nevertheless, I, I get where we're going with that.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? There are no speakers, so I think we're ready to vote.
All right, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor member Tyson. That vote should be up, Mr. President.
That item passes. Let's move to reconsider, uh, the consent agenda.
Second?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, uh, we just wanted to remove item four and five. Now, we have a mover and a second on the consent agenda.
Second? Move the item.
Second?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, the consent agenda is approved, minus items four and five. Mr. Clerk, call up items four and five.
Item four. A resolution relative to the application of Mary O. Sims LLC for a club liquor class II license to be used at the Pearl Lounge, 31 and 32 Boise Avenue, Birmingham, in the hearing of all ownership parties. Item five. A resolution relative to the application of Mary O. Sims LLC for a Division I dance permit to be used at the Pearl Lounge, 31, 32 Boise Avenue, Birmingham, in the hearing of all ownership parties.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, I'm moving for a four-week delay.
For a four-week delay. Items four and five. Hoyt, Parker, ready to vote, Mr. Clerk?
Okay. Voting should be open now. Vote should be up for those items.
Those items are delayed. Four weeks, item six.
All right, item six. A resolution relative to the application of Gregory Carlisle for a towing service license to be used at Red's Towing, 1104 Woodland Avenue, Southwest, Birmingham, to operate a wrecker on the streets of Birmingham.
All right, we have a mover and a second.
I move approval.
Second.
All right.
Before you take a vote, right-
Hold on just a second, Counselor Hoyt.
Well, it's, it's my, I was going to say, go ahead and give your report, because they, they are not in compliance, and, uh, we need to deny this today.
Right. Yeah, and that's all we wanted to say, is that, uh, this location, sorry?
State your name for the record.
Uh, yeah, sure, it's Tim Gambrell, zoning administrator for the city. Um, yeah, this location is actually zoned R3, and they would not be, you know, it wouldn't be legal for them to operate this type of business from this location. It's been an enforcement case in the past. It's been an enforcement case in the past, storing, uh, vehicles that are not allowed on the site. And, uh, so we just ask that you deny it or remove it.
Well, and, uh, and that's essentially what we want to do, um, because there are still cars that are just sitting there, inoperable, and, um, and it's not a benefit to the neighborhood, quite frankly. So, um, I would ask summarily that we would deny this. Yes, Counselor Tyson.
What are we gonna do to make sure that they clean up their property? Because even though we deny their license, that don't mean they gonna clean up the property. We have denied license before, and cars have sat there for years, and they still sit there on other properties. So denying the license is not enough. Uh, we, we need to hire more, uh, what is it?
Enforcement.
Enforcement, uh, whoever need to get on their job. Because these places sit in our community for years, with mosquitoes, rats, dogs hiding in them, from our dog catchers and everybody else. They are able to ha, they're breaking our houses, stealing our merchandise, and hiding in the junk cars and everything. As you might found a couple of dead bodies in them, if you really look hard. But no one is enforcing these things and making them get out. So that's not enough. And we need to definitely get on top of this, because we have several of them in the black communities.
Amen to that. I'm, I'm with you. So, so what is gonna be our, uh, strategy for this, uh, this cheaper operation?
I had a question too, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your name.
No, no, it's okay.
Go ahead, Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was, that was, first of all, is the applicant is here today?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chair, uh, am I able to ask any questions to the applicant?
Well, it's a public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you don't, if you all don't mind, and I don't mean to rush you, because I only have but a few seconds.
Yeah, we need to hear.
So let me ask you something, Mr. Chair. Do, uh, do you wanna hear from the applicant first, and then I come back and speak?
Yeah, and we could do that.
Yeah, 'cause I, I don't wanna take away my minutes.
If you would, state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, my name is Avare Cala. I live at eleven four Woodland Avenue, southwest.
Okay.
My name is Gregory Carlisle.
Come, come closer, sir, so we can hear you.
My name is Gregory Carlisle, and I live at Lemoore Four Woodland Avenue.
Okay, all right. Well, Ms. Carlisle, um, we discussed this in, um, in our Public Safety Committee meeting, and we, uh, were told that you were out of zone, and that, um, there were still some inoperable cars, uh, even in your yard even today. So, now tell me, what are you gonna do different than what, what has been the past? Sir?
I cleaned up everything outside the alley.
Just speaking to the mic.
What I do, I buy junk cars, and I can't sell them the same day. Car detective said, I buy a junk car, I gotta at least let it sit there two days.
Well, and generally, when you buy junk cars, you have a junk yard. And, and a residential home is not a junk yard. That's the problem.
And what I really need is a building for my stormer wrecker. I'm trying to find a building right now. If I had a little time.
Yeah, but you can't hold the neighborhood hostage while you try to do that.
You're right about that.
So that's the problem.
I clean my yard up.
Yeah, well, um, I think they had pictures and all, but, um, you gotta do something different, and I don't know what the outcome is gonna be today, but, um, it can't be the same. And Counselor Tyson is right, you know, um, the neighborhood is held hostage, and, uh, we need enforcement, uh, and probably wouldn't be in this condition now, um, if enforcement had have been applied, not just citing, but enforcement.
Can I say something?
Certainly. Yes, ma'am.
That, that is our.
Come up to the mic, baby, so we can hear you.
That is our residence and home, so it's not like, it's like junky and junk. My husband do store cars there when he can't get rid of them the same day, but it's not like we have flies and tires and whatever they were saying that was going on. Our, our house is not like that. The yard is not like that. If they wanna come out and take another look at it, then it's fine, because we have cleaned that up, and there was some cars on the outside, but they're no longer there. So I would appreciate.
But right now, we, we in violation of the ordinance that control that, and so we can't say it's okay when it's not okay. And unfortunately for us, most things are complaint-driven. So if nobody complains about them, then it don't necessarily get addressed immediately. But when, when we have cases where people have called in and made their formal complaint, then we have a responsibility as a, as a city, as a council, to follow up on those.
I understand.
Okay. Okay, so right now, you all operate in violation of the ordinance itself.
So, uh, if we find like a building for, like I told you, 'cause normally, from my understanding, that was the problem.
But the, the issue here is the zoning. It has to be zoned for that, for that use, which would encompass, um, recycling, need, I need go there, but, uh, recycling, uh, junk yard, you know, those are some of the, um, um, suggestive, um, things that could, it comes under that ordinance. Okay? So you got to make sure that, uh, is going on too. But in the meantime, those cars that you have there need to be removed.
They're already been removed. There are, there are no cars.
There's no cars there? Okay, well then, we need to send somebody out and check that. Okay. So what do we need to do, um? Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel, uh, Rap, I mean, uh, Scales.
Oh, Lord, I'm looking like Counselor Rafferty. Uh, I better stay in the sound a little bit longer. All right, uh, so first of all, that, that was the reason why I wanted to hear from you, from you all, because what Counsel Hoyt is saying is, just like you just heard me ask about that zoning, and I said it was in my district, basically what it is, is that where you live, you're also doing business there. You understand? So when you get your, uh, business at a location that's away from where you live, a basically residential area, then you come back and you reapply. But that was the main thing, was just to, to hear from you, to see what it is that is the issue. And I do, I agree with what they're saying, because, uh, I've seen it before myself. Not yours, but in general. You see what I mean? And so, um, that's, that's hopefully the next step that you will take, and for what you do have already on your property, uh, to make sure that that's removed, 'cause you don't want the environmental police coming out to the house. Okay? 'Cause obviously, someone has complained about it. That means that they're gonna continue to complain until it's get, it get done. See what I mean? And you don't wanna break the law in trying to do business in the same city that says you're breaking the law. Does that make sense? So, do you all, have you already had plans of, of taking your business, uh, and, and, you know, getting a, a place where that would be acceptable?
Yes, ma'am. We, we're in the process now of trying to find a building where we can do that, like, uh, store our tow truck, and as far as, you know, getting cars and stuff like that. We're, we're in the process of that now.
Yeah, because, just because of, for the law's sake, and, and the neighborhood. I understand, and I, I wouldn't vote for it today, but what I'm hoping that you don't do is give up, you know, on trying to get your business, 'cause what Counsel Hoyt is saying is that if you can get the business at a business that allows you to be able to have the proper zoning, then, you know, you, you can probably get more of a positive response, which is obviously what you want. You see what I mean? But I don't want it to be one of those situations where you just say, hey, you know, they ain't give it to us, so gonna kind of just let it hang out there. I don't get that impression from you, uh, but I'm, I'm hoping that you will do that. At least make sure that whatever is not operating, you know, go ahead and move it on. But in the meantime, look for your location, and then Counsel Hoyt is user-friendly. So that means that when you find a location, the best thing to do before you ever go by, make sure that it's zoned for what you're trying to get it for, before you even buy it. That make sense? So then you're not wasting your money or your time. Okay? All right, thank you, Counsel.
Well, thank you. Uh, Counsel Tyson.
Yes, I wanted to, uh, suggest.
Ms. Carlisle, you all come back, please.
I wanted to suggest that it's a building on, um, Woodland Avenue and Long, right there on the corner.
Right across the street. Yeah, we been, uh, we knew that guy who had that building, but I think he passed. Did he pass? Or he's in the nursing home or something, you know, so, but anyway, it's got a sale sign on it, and we've been trying to look into that, so we can just move our business, like, right across there.
Yes.
Because he did tow cars there, and he fixed on cars there.
So that would be a, a good building right there, 'cause it's already zoned for it.
Okay. All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. President, we turn it back over to you, sir.
All right, ready to vote, Mr. Clerk.
All right, voting should be up.
Remember no is the right.
Okay, that vote should be up, Mr. President.
All right, that item fails. Uh, Mr. Clerk, let's move to spin the rules for our presentations.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
First presentation, Mr. Keith Cromwell, Red Mountain Theater.
Good morning, uh, President Austin and, uh, all you counsel ladies and gentlemen. My name's Keith Cromwell, Executive Director of Red Mountain Theater Company. I just am here today to thank you for your constant support, and give you a reminder, and maybe a little shot in the arm of all the great things that are happening. I think so often, we can turn on our news and be reminded of all the things that are challenges that we're thankful for your leadership in facing. But today, Red Mountain Theater Company is a strong economic engine in Birmingham. We're a three-million-dollar nonprofit agency that specializes in making the possible out of the impossible. We have kids who have signed Hollywood record deals, kids on Disney films, but more importantly, they're lawyers, doctors, marketers, or politicians of the future. We're building the leaders of the future. Uh, so I want to thank you for allowing us some time today to present our cast of The Wiz, which opens this Friday. We're thrilled to bring in amazing artists. Again, the economic driver of having a gentleman named Rufus Bonds, who played Mufasa in Lion King, is our director. We've got the amazing Dominique Kelly, who is on tour with Taylor Swift, is our choreographer. So we've got these amazing talent cultivating the jewels of Birmingham with amazing people from across our nation. So, without further ado, here's Aunt Em. And there are some lyrics in here that are called "If You Believe," and "Can You Feel a Brand New Day." And I know we all believe, and we can feel things are greatly happening here in Birmingham. Thank you.
Put your arms around me, child, like when you bumped your shin. And you know I love you now as I loved you then. Though you may be trying sometimes, and I need you, and you're not there. Now I may get mad and turn you away, but Lord knows I still care. But you cannot ask for more than can come from me. I am different than you are, and one day you'll see. So if I lose my patience with you, and suddenly I start to scream, it's only because I just want you to be everything I see in my dream. And I'd like to know that it's there, the feeling we wanted, knowing that you can come to me whenever you're feeling bad.
It's a feeling we wanted.
Ooh, don't lose it.
It's a feeling we wanted. Can't you feel a brand new day? Can't you feel a brand new day? Can't you feel a brand new day? Can't you feel a brand new day?
Everybody look around, 'cause there's a reason to rejoice, you see. Everybody come out, and let's commence the singing joyfully.
Everybody look up and find the hope that we've been waiting on. Everybody's glad, because our silent fear and dread is gone.
Freedom, you see, has got a heart singing so joyfully. Just look about, you went to yourself to check it out. Can't you feel a brand new day? Can't you feel a brand new day? Can't you feel a brand new day? Can't you feel a brand new day?
Everybody be glad, because the sun is shining just for us. Everybody wake up into the morning, into happiness. Hello, world, it's like a different way of living now. Thank you, world.
Always be that goofy three somehow.
It's harmony, to show the world that we've got liberty. It's such a shame, for the lips to win dependently. Freedom, you see, has got a heart singing so joyfully. Just look about, you went to yourself to check it out. Can't you feel a brand new day? 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 Can't you feel a brand new day?
Did you say where it's gonna be done?
Keith, could you tell us, um, first, I want to thank you for, for being here this morning. Uh, that was a fantastic performance, and we're looking forward to seeing the entire show. Can you tell us more about that before you leave?
As a matter of fact, I can. It opens on May fifteenth and runs through May thirty-first. Um, we're thrilled that so many, uh, people from all of your districts have already bought tickets, and we're, we have, through the generosity of multiple of our, um, sponsors, we're bringing, uh, all the city of Birmingham out to see The Wiz. So, I'll, I'll leave these with you all today, so you can have the dates.
And will that be at the Red Mountain Theater?
I'm sorry?
Where would it be? Hell?
It's at the Red Mountain Theater Company Cabaret, which is in the old Crest Building.
Okay.
Just, uh, in the basement of the Crest Building, or we prefer to call it the lower level.
Okay.
Thank you all today.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, uh, the next presentation, Counsel Parker.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Uh, I just want to call up the Birmingham Park and Recreation Board and Mr. Kevin Moore, um, to discuss some of the upcoming activities, uh, for the summer, so just wanted everyone, uh, to be aware of them, so. Mr. Moore, you'll start it off, and Mr. Stanley.
Good morning. I don't know how we even follow that, but, uh, you know, Mr. Moore. Well, first, Counsel, I want to thank, and, Mr. Patton, uh, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to come before you today. Also want to thank you all for, uh, your commitment to the Funk Fest on May second. Uh, it was a great event. It was the first, uh, event of its type at the, uh, at Legion Field Stadium in over almost twenty years. Uh, but we are still doing some positive things, uh, in the community. Uh, Mr. Robinson is gonna give an update, as well as Ms. Bushellon, of some of the things that we're doing. Uh, we, we really, um, amped up our, uh, ability to do things that are healthy for the community. Uh, we are actually continuing some of our programs, but I'd like Mr. Robinson to give a full update of those activities. Thank you.
Good morning again. I'd like to just mention some of the activities that are upcoming. As you all know, summer is coming, and, uh, that means our parks are getting busy. And I know, you all know that, because many of you have activities scheduled in your districts, and you're utilizing the parks for those things. Uh, Mr. Moore did mention Funk Fest has just happened. I know that this Saturday, we're going to wrap up the One Hundred and Seven Days of Fitness at Legion Field Stadium. That's the initiative for getting Birmingham out and exercising in our facilities, and, and it's really not a wrap-up. It's really our way of celebrating that one hundred and seven days of activity and encouraging people that, you've shown that you can do one hundred and seven days of fitness, continue on and do the rest of the year, and continue year after year with that activity. So that's Saturday at Legion Field from eight a.m. until eleven. Uh, we are, also, if everyone knows, this Saturday is due today. That happens in, um, Caldwell and Ruston Parks. So if you've got a friendly pooch, you know, get out and enjoy that activity. That's this Saturday. Uh, free movies will start in Abingdon Park. Uh, free movies will start in Avondale Park, um, starting on June second. Of course, the infamous Family Fishing Rodeo, the eighteenth year for that event, takes place June sixth at East Lake Park. That's a free event. Uh, Steel City Jazz Fest, June fifth. Jazz in the Park starts June seventh. Soul Night at, in the park is at Avondale, uh, June twentieth. And there's a car show July the eleventh in Avondale. So the thing, the theme of this is, I guess, is that people want to play in Birmingham. And by that meaning, people want to come to Birmingham to enjoy what Birmingham has to offer in our green spaces and our parks, so, um. But really, we're here today to really tell you all about the summer camp activities. And when Mr. Moore came aboard, he sort of challenged us to be more engaged with, uh, participants and to bring other entities within the city to help us to, to do what we do, but to do it better. And I guess probably, maybe Mr. Moore or Ms. Bushelon, who are more involved in the summer camps, can discuss those things.
Hey, good, good morning. Thank you for inviting us, Counsel Parker. I just wanted to expound on a couple of our largest programs for the summer. Um, the summer camp program, first of all, we do our best to try to make this as budget-friendly as possible for our citizens. Um, as Stanley said, it's a twenty-five dollar registration fee. It's a hundred dollars a session. A session is four weeks. Um, that's about as cheap as it gets. Um, but on top of that, we try to provide a, a lasting, positive experience for our campers. This year, we are teaming up, partnering with the Board of Education to provide some excellent educational enrichment experiences. We'll be teaching some classes such as math and reading literacy, as well as social studies and science. But on top of that, we want to make camp fun for the kids. This isn't school in the summer, so we also provide arts and crafts, music, dance, as well as having some fun and educational field trips. I know last year, one of our field trips went to the, um, naval base in Pensacola, which I thought was an excellent experience for these kids. This year, one of our camps is going to the, uh, Civil Rights Institute in Memphis, Tennessee. So I, I believe we really do strive to provide a, a positive experience for our campers. On top of that, we have our swimming pools, um, that will be opening Memorial Weekend. We teach swim lessons to any and everybody. The cost is five dollars. That money goes to the American Red Cross, um, to provide the certification for them to pass the courses. So we try to make it as affordable as possible. We want every child to learn how to swim. Um, that's a life-saving issue for people, and this is something that we always have tried to provide. We also, we charge one dollar to be able to swim at our pools. We feel like that's affordable. So we just invite you to invite all of your constituents to, to come out and partake of these activities. I know our summer camps are filling up fast. I believe Hawkins and East Penson Valley is already full. So just tell them to give our recreation centers a call.
Mr. President. Counsel Abbott. Counsel Hoyt.
I just wanted to ask a question about your, uh, parks activities schedule. Is it on the city's website where people can find it?
What, what, I guess what we're gonna be doing is, is, um, we're, we're collaborating together, not only with the council staff, but Ms. Sharp and I have been meeting to make sure that we're able to get it on the council staff. And I think they will probably be in communication with the mayor's office to get it on, with Ms. April Odom, to get it on the city's staff. We want to present it.
Because a lot of people search our website to get information. And when our website is either empty or the information is incorrect, it's not good. But I think we've got so many wonderful things going on in city parks. We need to be able to promote that every way we can.
Yeah, we've been having meetings, but we didn't want it to, wanted to come to the council first before you sit on the website, so.
Well, that's very nice.
Okay, uh, there's a couple more things that, if you, give me just a second. We do have a scholarship available. Uh, Judge Brenda Brown Green has, uh, has, uh, for several years presented a scholarship for summer camp. So, uh, you can contact our office at two five four two three nine one for more information on the scholarship for summer camp. If anyone has any, uh, kids within the community that may be interested in needing assistance with, uh, paying for the summer camp. Also, um, I wanted to say a few things because, you know, all the things we do, like I said, we don't necessarily always have the resources, but we do have some positive, uh, partners. And we want to acknowledge our partners with the one hundred and seven day wrap-up, uh, of fitness. Uh, we have the American Cancer Society, American Heart Association, uh, the YMCA, which has, has come on and onboard with us. And we're working, uh, together in several partnerships. They're providing some services even to our recreation centers. So we do want the council to know that we are partnering with people outside of the city, and it's been a, a positive relationship. Uh, even with the one hundred and seven days of fitness, even our staff participate, I participate. I think I've lost about ten pounds, so. We actually, we asked that you all come out. We have boot camp tonight at Henry Crumpton Recreation Center. And I promise you, uh, an hour and a half with Joel Simmons will really impact your life. So please come out to our facilities. We do, uh, we do all these programs for free. We're not charging for, uh, line dancing, zumba. Uh, so we, we, we really would like to see you all in the community at our facilities. Uh, our, our staff has taken the commitment that we've given them to change how we do, uh, recreation, and, uh, we appreciate your support.
Mr. President.
Counsel Hoyt.
Yes, um, Mr. Moore, I was just trying to figure out whether you lost the ten pounds. That, that, that because you, you don't have any hair anymore? But anyway, but I, I wanted you to talk about, uh, Jazz in the Park and, and what parks have you all, um, located? I just want to make sure answers included in your poll.
Answers there is.
Okay, well, that's all I need to know. We don't need to talk about that then.
We, we made an effort to, to hit every dish.
Well, and, and I want to talk about the swimming because, um, swimming is so important. And, um, and, and an avid swimmer, and my, I, matter of fact, I, I might come out one evening and just teach a little bit. Um, uh, because I taught at Lawson State some years back, uh, swimming, and so, uh, but I like to come out because I, I need to lose about, uh, about a hundred pounds, okay? So, um, but I think swimming is, is so involving. And matter of fact, it doesn't matter what size you are. You know, you can, you can be a great swimmer, uh, even as large as I am. Uh, swim like a fish. I can float and all that. And I guess you can imagine I can float. But anyway, not everybody can float. Some people go down to the ground, to the bottom. But, um, but swimming is just so involving, and it really, every kid, uh, really needs to. And I think the earlier the better. Um, you know, when they get to be, uh, five or six months old, you need to put them in that pool. Um, and I don't know if y'all have such a program for the little bitty toddlers.
We, we actually have a, a swim team that we actually, we work a lot with the, uh, Crossplex. Uh, they allow us to use the indoor facility, uh, to run our swim program. We're actually trying to change a lot of things we're doing in recreation, uh, to even put staff people in place so that we can be as competitive as Hoover and some of the other programs around. Uh, our, our issue, and I'm gonna be honest with you, deals with staffing. We have to have adequate staff.
Staff, right.
And not pay part-time people to do full-time work, so. Uh, we're working on that, and we've received support from the mayor's office.
Yeah, because I grew up and we had a jamb, uh, we'd call a jamboree at the end of the summer. And then all the pools from, not only from Gaston, but from Rome, Georgia, everywhere in that region, got together and they, and we sw- uh, swam in, in competition. And so, uh, and I know you all do that at, at, uh.
At Eastlake, we can have the city wine, yes, on, uh, August the first, invite, this year is August the first.
Okay, because I enjoyed that the last time. Uh, and I know Ms. Pack is one of those person who worked with the, uh, I think she's a lifeguard or something. Yeah.
Well, we also, uh, we do provide swimming for all ages, and we also provide, um, water aerobics for our seniors as well at East Lake and at, um, East Penson Valley. We have wonderful water fitness programs out there. The classes are packed, and we look forward to having our staff on there full-time so we can open up our hours, extend our hours into the evening to be able to teach more of those classes.
Very good.
Uh, as well as all of our swimming classes.
Now, I wasn't at the concert, but I understood. It was just wonderful. And I appreciate that. And Counsel Parker, I think you need to be commended to as a chair of that, uh, of that, uh, department because that's really, um, really wonderful. And I'm hoping y'all, you know, do some whole, a whole lot of stuff. And, and don't forget about, you know, everybody, you know, I, I can be, uh, you know, I think it was a funk fest, I can be funky, but every now and then I want to be holy too, so, uh, so if you can get a gospel concert with that same kind of thrust and what have you, uh, we need to do that. Outdoors, because people like to be outdoors.
And that's why I wanted to really thank the council and the mayor's office because what we did on May second has opened the door up, uh, for possibilities. We've already had some conversations with some promoters, so we really appreciate it. We knew, we knew some of the things were out of the box. Uh, but it, it has opened the door and gives, uh, Legion Field more opportunities to be successful, bring more events to, to state.
Yeah, because job is like that heavy metal, don't it?
We, we're looking for it all.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Parker. Um, let's move to suspend the, uh, rules or take up the mayor's report. Mr. Patton.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen, and counsel. Uh, eighty by eighteen. Uh, that's Stephen Horton's agreed to lose eighty pounds by twenty eighteen. That sounds great, doesn't it? But it's really not true. Uh, it's a movement by dozens of organizations have committed itself to eliminating colorectal cancer. Uh, so we're talking about major problems that exist across the United States, and the goal is to reach eighty percent of persons being screened by twenty eighteen. And the city joins in and effort in helping us this morning to celebrate that is Matt Allison and Julie Mayers. Are they here? Can you come forward, please? You're not Julie?
No, I'm not. She, she unfortunately is, uh, was unable to make it.
Okay.
So, um, I, I actually have a few things for the, the council members if we can handle that. So, um, I work for the American Cancer Society and, and conjunction with the Centers for Disease Control, we head up an organization called the Colorectal Roundtable.
State your name.
Uh, Matt Allison, again, the American Cancer Society. And our goal is to eliminate colon cancer as a large public health area, uh, issue in Alabama and specifically in Birmingham. Um, in the folders that you are receiving, there's a few pieces of information that I, I think you may find valuable. First, on the right side, you have a simple infographic that gives you some basic statistics around colon cancer. Um, the big takeaway that I, I would like for you to know is that colon cancer is largely preventable, maybe the most preventable form of cancer. When we think of other things like cervical cancer or breast cancer, it's really typically about early detection. With colon cancer, we can pres, we can actually prevent about sixty-five percent of cases. And those that we cannot prevent, we actually can detect it early where our chances of survival are upwards of ninety-five percent. So in, in, in Jefferson County, this year, about a hundred and thirty people die of colon cancer. In Alabama, it's, it's a little over a thousand. Those, those numbers don't need to happen. Um, in large part, that is because if you look on the right side of that folder, you will also see a breakdown of the screening rates for every, every zip code in Jefferson County. And we can see that not only is screening quite low, and Jefferson County as a whole is only fifty-one percent, that even amongst the African-American communities and other minorities, the screening rates are even lower than that. So we have, we are, I think, obligated to try to do something to help fix this public health issue. And that, at least at the beginnings, is, uh, supporting the, the efforts to improve those screening numbers to eighty percent by the end of twenty eighteen. So on the left side of that folder, you'll see a copy of the pledge. And the pledge is just saying that the, the city of Birmingham supports these efforts. That is, they're, they're willing to make sure that colon cancer awareness is, uh, an important public health matter we close out this year and in the coming years. So there'll be other efforts that we will do to try to raise awareness around the community, but we hope that this will be the first step. Um, we also think it's, it's a nice thing for the city of Birmingham. If you do, as council members decide to sign the pledge, we will be the first city in the country to do so. The first city council to, uh, to do that. This is a pledge that's been signed over two hundred and twenty-five different organizations around the country. And, um, I think would be beneficial for our communities. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay.
Counsel Abbott.
Yeah, I wanted to ask, like, where is the pledge?
Should, it should be on that, there's a document on the left side of your. And I have another copy that we can use to actually sign that's not front and back.
I didn't look at the back.
Yeah. So I, I, I made sure I, I have copies for y'all, but then I have an, an additional copy that, uh, hopefully we can sign and actually, take back and, and send into the National Colorectal Roundtable.
Okay, after we sign it, what are we committing ourselves to do? Just fight, fight, fight?
Uh, e- exactly. That's, that's exactly right. It's supporting us as an organization, supporting all the volunteers that we have around the city. Um, and organizations such as UAB and the other hospitals and, um, community members that really will help us push colon cancer as a, as a public health problem.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Yeah, well, and I wanted to invite you. I have, um, the part of it purpose, which is a day of empowerment. And certainly we have a, um, a, a health benefit to that as well. And would love for you to come out and, uh, and do some promotion of, of this, uh, and, and maybe even set up your room to do some screening. If you, uh, do you, are y'all doing any screening?
Um, it, it is a, it's a complicated answer to that, actually. We, we, we try to work with physicians because, um, the follow-up nature of the, the, the screening itself um, is best left into the medical community. But we have partners, uh, and organizations that will, that we work with that can provide that.
Okay. Well, it's October the third.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, this year, thank you.
Okay.
This year marks the twenty-fifth anniversary of Americans with Diabetes. Here to join us and give brief remarks, uh, and receive a proclamation are Brittany Gore and Dr. John Masakri. Are they here?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, my name is Cindy Jones, and I am blind, as you can see. I also have a hearing loss. But I am here today to represent different entities that have joined together to celebrate the Americans with Disabilities Act. This is the twenty-fifth anniversary that we will be celebrating. And our president of the Alabama Institute of Deaf and Blind, where I work, is, uh, here with us today. And he is a man I have great respect for. He asked me to speak on the ADA. And when he first asked me to speak, I, I was like, oh, my gosh, I don't have an earth-moving, tear-jerking story to share with you. But since he is my boss, I would, I would do as he asked. Um, and then I started giving it great thought because the ADA is very important to people with all disabilities. And what I came up with, the fact that I am standing here before you today is what the ADA means to me. The fact that I live in a city that I adore and work in a job that I love is what the ADA means to me. The fact that I've been able to raise my children side by side with my sighted neighbors is what the ADA means to me. The fact that I can jump on a plane, a train, or a bus and expect accommodations without shame or embarrassment is what the ADA means to me. In a nutshell, the ADA has allowed me to live the life I want. And on May nineteenth, and it is appropriate that on May nineteenth, we will come together to celebrate the signing of the ADA. It is appropriate that we will gather in the historic Kelly Ingram Park so we can show and recognize the achievements and accomplishments of all people with disabilities. Birmingham has always been a leader in the civil rights movement, and this is still true today. For the ADA is a civil rights legislation that was signed into law. And we are so lucky that on this day, we have had many federal, state, local, and private entities that have joined forces so we can come together and show the city of Birmingham and the nation because we have a national tour coming to the city of Birmingham. and the nation, because we have a national tour coming to the city of Birmingham on May nineteenth, that we have embraced the ADA. We have always demanded civil rights, and civil rights has demanded justice, and the ADA has ensured justice for all. I want to invite every one of you to come and join with us on May nineteenth and, and learn about American, the Americans with Disabilities Act, and learn about disabilities that people have in our city, and the great job that the city of Birmingham is doing with employing people with disabilities. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. Thank you. I'm, I'm Brittany Gore, and I, I'll just make it very brief. Really Cindy pretty much covered it all. I mean, the Americans Disabilities Act gave a lot of freedom to people with disabilities. And everybody has a, everyone has an ability, and everyone has a human right. And that's pretty much what the ADA gave to people with disabilities. And I'm proud to stand here as the president of People First of Alabama and be able to sell, join with Cindy and others to celebrate the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Americans with Disability Act. Thank you.
We now read the proclamation. Whereas twenty-five years ago, through the Americans with Disabilities Act, or ADA, our nation committed itself to eliminating discrimination against people with disabilities. And whereas, through the courageous efforts of men and women who spoke out against discrimination, the ADA helped to ensure those with disabilities had the same rights and freedom as everyone else. And whereas, the ADA promises equal access and equal opportunity regardless of ability. And whereas, the ADA secures each person's right to an independent life, and it enables our country and our economy to benefit from the talents and contributions of all Americans. And whereas, the city of Birmingham's Americans with Disabilities Office works tirelessly by providing appropriate aids and services leading to effective communication for qualified persons with disabilities. And whereas, on the anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, or ADA, we recommit to tearing down barriers and ensuring all Americans have the right to live normal and successful lives. Now therefore, I, William A. Bell Senior, Mayor of the City of Birmingham, Alabama, do hereby issue this proclamation in honor of the Americans with Disabilities Act twenty-fifth anniversary in Birmingham, and urge all citizens to celebrate this civil rights law and recognize the important contributions made by individuals with disabilities.
Once again, thanks so much for all the things you do. Ms. Linda Coleman is out because she's in Atlanta, I think, at a conference. I think she's watching this live or in real time, as they call it. So I want to thank Ms. Coleman for all the work that she does with her, her particular department. I can't help but getting cheers every time I hear May nineteenth, because you said it five or six times, that's the day I got married, so.
Bet your wife's glad you remembered that.
Well, it's forty, it's forty-two years I should remember by that time.
You should.
So once again, congratulations, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. President. Go ahead. Counselor Hoyt.
Yeah, well, I was just gonna say, uh, you said you weren't a good speaker, and, and you have mesmerized us in this audience, and so, um, I think you need to join the Speaker's Bureau. There's a club they used to have, uh, around here. What is it called, Jarvis? I guess the Speakers. Huh? Toastmaster.
You forgot already.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, because, uh, 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 that's one of my talents, I suspect. But anyway, um, you have done a marvelous job, both of you, uh, in raising our awareness this month, I mean, uh, the, today, and, uh, certainly we join forces with you all, uh, and appreciate you all coming and speaking to us, uh, because it really is making a difference. And, um, I always remember our former colleague, uh, Marion Willispoon, uh, who was, uh, a disabled, uh, person, uh, but not necessarily disabled, because she got, I told her, uh, I asked her how much she paid for that, that, uh, wheelchair she had. She said thirty thousand dollars. I said, well, listen, it can go up this hill, so let's push it. And so from that point on, Marion started going everywhere, not necessarily with somebody, but by herself, uh, because it gave her a sense of independence, uh, as well as you all experiencing working and making a difference, even in your own workplace. So, um, I say kudos to you all this day, and thank you, uh, Mr. Patton, for bringing them, uh, here in the mayor, uh, before us today. Thank you kindly.
Good morning. I'm John Massey, the president of the Alabama Institute for Deaf and Blind, and Counselor Hoyt stole my thunder a little bit. I agree with you completely. What the ADA means to me as an individual that doesn't have disabilities, visible disabilities, I should say, but as a person who has, um, the blessing to work with and on behalf of folks with disabilities every day, is that, um, these folks can speak for themselves, and they should speak for themselves, and they can certainly do a much better job than I can in terms of conveying the passion and commitment they have for making sure that everybody in this country and in this wonderful city of Birmingham, um, has the ability to live and to work in the community of their choice. It's just a blessing to be here today, and it's nice to see my friend, President Austin. Thank you.
And I just wanna just say one thing, Mr. Patton, and to the mayor, thank you for bringing them here today. I didn't know John was coming here, but, um, John and I are recent graduates of, um, Leadership Alabama, uh, so we've gotten to know each other very well over the last year. And, uh, just on our last, um, last week, we were talking about, um, your organization, and John is very passionate about his work and what he does, and I just did not want him to leave without, uh, acknowledging you for just, because I've gotten to know you and know what you do and really understand the passion that you bring to your job, uh, and to, um, to your, to the community, um, that you seek to serve, I really appreciate everything that you're doing. I appreciate your commitment, uh, to excellence, uh, diversity, and I think that is just so vitally important. Uh, so I just want to take this opportunity to thank you, John, for your work. Congratulations, and certainly keep up the good work.
Thank you. One other item, Mr. Chairman. Speaking of speeches, uh, this morning, we have the winners of the twenty-fifteen Inspirational Speeches Award. Here to give us more information is Glidia Walker. Is she, is she still here? Would you come forward, please?
Gilda.
Gilda?
Yes.
Okay.
I hope she gives her speech. So we can be inspired.
Good morning.
Good morning.
To the mayor in his absence, I'm not Gilda.
Okay, I know you're not.
I'm not Gilda. Uh, I'm the, I'm Reverend LaVitra's Crunkrum, and, uh, I'm the founding executive director of JJ's Freedom Center, and our address is eight twelve Eighteenth Way Southwest. We come today, uh, JJ's Freedom Center is an after-school and summer program located in the western section of Birmingham. We're located in an old Eureka School, uh, in the western section. We do after-school and summer programs for kids. So we are here because just like that, tho- those young people saying earlier, can't you feel a brand-new day? JJ's Freedom Center is a brand-new day for West End. So we have come today to let you know that we are representing, uh, the city in a Oratorica Contest, which we had on April fifteenth as a local, uh, competition, and we will be going to Chicago on June the nineteenth as, at the national. But I, we're here for two reasons. If you briefly give me an opportunity to share with you, we are here to introduce and highlight our kids who participated in the April, in the April twenty-fifth, uh, competition, which will be going to Chicago. Secondly, the reason we're here, we're here to ask for your support. We are in, uh, an old Eureka School located in West End, and on June the fifth, we have been asked to vacate that building. But West End, JJ's Freedom Center is one of the only after-school summer programs in our area. And as we look at Ferguson, and as we look at Baltimore, most of those kids are saying, somebody need to hear us. Somebody needs to hear us. Somebody needs to do something for us. That's what JJ's Freedom Center is trying to do. And we are coming to ask you for your support to help us to remain, first, to get to, to Chicago, secondly, to remain in the Uca, Eureka School after June the first, so we can do our summer program and also our after-school program, which we deal with our kids in reading and math. And we also give, provide, after, uh, uh, performing arts, dance, music, and drama in West End. And some people say nothing good comes out of West End. That's not true. Good things come out of West End, so we're asking you to support us. And Ms. Gilda Walker is our coordinator who, who orchestrated our speech and, our speech program, so if you would give her a minute to introduce to you our students. Thank you very much. Come by and see us, and we're at eight twelve Eighteenth Way Southwest, JJ's Freedom Center, a safe haven for children. Thank you very much.
Good morning to the mayor in his absence, uh, council and residents of Birmingham. I think we should be able to do everything we need to do in our own neighborhoods and communities. These children, uh, have made history. This is the first time in the history of this speech awards that Birmingham slash Fairfield on the beautiful campus of Miles College participated. We had our local competition on the twenty-fifth of April where we, uh, along with Chicago, Illinois, and Baton Rouge, Louisiana, broadcast simultaneously, uh, to, uh, present the contest. You heard yesterday, uh, former Secretary of State Rice say that public speaking is very important. We say powerful persuasive public speaking is necessary, and we can't do without it because much of why we're here today is because of the powerful speech of Dr. King and others. Today, I've heard a theme of democracy in this room from the WizCast, and if you will allow us, I would like to ask our first level, first-place winner, Kayla Kane, to do for you Democracy, and our third level, first-place winner, Nakira Thompson, to do Network. Uh, Democracy is written by Langston Hughes. Network is by Howard Beall. Thank you.
Turn, turn to us.
Democracy. Democracy would not come today, this year, nor ever through compromise and fear. I have as much right as the other fellow has to stand on my two feet and own the land. I tire so of hearing people say, let things take their course. Tomorrow is another day. I do not need my freedom when I'm dead. I cannot live on tomorrow's bread. Freedom is a strong seed planted in a great need. I live here too. I want freedom, just as you.
Network. I don't have to tell you things are bad. Everybody knows things are bad. It's a depression. Everybody's out of work or scared of losing their job. The dollar buys a nickel worth. Banks are going bust. Shopkeepers keep a gun under the counter. Criminals are running wild in the street, and there's nobody anywhere who seems to know what to do, and there's no insulin. We know the air is unfit to breathe, and our food is unfit to eat, and we sit watching our TVs while some local newscaster tells us that today we had sixty-three violent crimes, fifteen homicides, as if that's the way it's supposed to be. We know things are crazy. Worse than crazy, they're bad. It's like everything, everywhere is going crazy, so we don't go out anymore. We sit in the house, and slowly the world we're living in is getting smaller, and all we say is, please, at least leave us alone in our living room. Let me have my TV, my toaster, toaster, my steel-bettered radios, and I won't say anything, just leave us alone. Well, I'm not gonna leave you alone. I want you to get mad. I don't want you to protest. I don't want you to riot. I don't want you to write to your congressman, because I wouldn't know what to tell you to write. I don't know what to do about the depression and the inflation and the Russians and the crime in the street. All I know is, first, you've got to get mad. You've got to say, I'm a human being, and my life has value. So I want you to get up now. I want all of you to get up out your chairs. I want you to get up right now. Go to the window, stick your head out, and yell, I am mad, and I'm not gonna take this anymore.
We not only plan to go to Chicago, but we plan to go to Chicago and participate in a competitive manner and bring back trophies to Birmingham, Alabama. We have come together Arrington School, uh, Western Academy, Joan Valley, and Princeton, and either one of these children could walk up here and present today, so we need your help, and we're asking you to support us as we go to do bidding for our city. Thank you.
That's it?
Mr. President, I, I used to think I could speak, but these young people done put me to shame today.
All right. Um, Mr. Clerk, item, uh, seventeen and twenty-two.
Item seventeen is on page five. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter, into a right-of-way use agreement whereby the University of Alabama Board of Trustees on behalf of the University of Alabama at Birmingham, allowed to install three vaults and chilled water pipes lines in the subsurface right-of-way of Seventh Avenue South and between Fourteenth Street South and Eighteenth Street South for the UAB Hill Stud, centered within the city of Birmingham, right of way. Said item twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a right-of-way use agreement whereby University of Alabama Board of Trustees on behalf of the University of Alabama at Birmingham is allowed to install one vault and chilled water pipelines in the subsurface right-of-way of the Seventh Avenue South between Seventeenth Street South and Eighteenth Street South for the UAB Callahan Eye Foundation within the city of Birmingham right-of-way.
Mr. President. I move that we refer these, both these items to the committee of the whole.
Second.
Go ahead.
Uh, UAB is in my district, and I, uh, out of respect of being their counselor, uh, why are they being moved to the city of Alabama?
We're asking, um, we sent a letter to Dr. Wise, asked to meet with him, um, to talk to us about the plans for UAB, its future growth, uh, and one of these items, I believe, twenty-two, hasn't even been to the committee. Mr. Clerk, ready to vote?
Voting should be open. That vote should be open.
All right. That'll be, um, sent to committee of the whole, item eighteen.
Item eighteen, an ordinance adopting the city of Birmingham Tax Tribunal Rules Governing the City of Birmingham Tax Appeals and Dispute Resolution as authorized by Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, Title Forty, Chapter Two B. I need you see first.
I move approval.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I need a motion to put it before you.
I move the item.
All right. Do we have any speakers? Just a question, uh, I do, and I guess it would be for Mr. Barnett. What are we doing with this item, Mr. Barnett?
Uh, this is in response to state, recent state legislation that set up a procedure throughout the state to try to make, uh, tax disputes, uh, with taxpayers in uniform, and so this is our, setting up our mechanism to handle those cases where, uh, a taxpayer is in disagreement with what the city says they, their tax should be.
So what now, you said?
Uh, when, when they're.
The last part I didn't, I just didn't hear.
When, when, when we've levied, uh, a tax, a bill against a taxpayer, they can go to this tribunal if they don't agree with it.
Okay.
Appeal, appeal it to that tax tribunal.
Okay. All right. We're ready to vote, Mr. Clerk. Thank you. Thank you.
Voting is up. That vote should be up.
All right, that item passes. Next item, it should be item twenty-five.
Item twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Steel City Jazz Festival LLC whereby Steel City Jazz Festival LLC will conduct the annual Steel City Jazz Festival, June the fifth and the sixth, two thousand and fifteen, in Lynn Park. The city will provide in-kind services that will provide for the health, safety, and welfare of festival attendees and guests during the festival and determine that the festival serves a valid public purpose which promotes the city as a recreational and cultural center that attracts visitors and others to the city.
We have a mover in a second. Uh, the item twenty-five. Second, Parker, Austin. Counselor Hoyt?
Yeah, well, I'm just trying to realize, it says here that the city, that the Steel, Steel City Jazz shall pay the city twenty percent of its net revenue earned. And I'm just trying to see, what, what amount is that?
We won't, we don't know yet.
Do we have a ballpark? I mean, they did have this last year.
Let me give a scenario. If they cleared a hundred thousand dollars, we'd get twenty thousand.
Okay, I, I understand that, but I was just trying to see what was the revenue realized last year?
Well, they're here, they're here to speak. It's my understanding that they didn't make any money last year. So gentlemen, if possible, you want them to come forward?
Counselor Hoyt, you want to hear from them?
Yes, absolutely.
Good morning.
Morning, Mr. President, Counselor.
Mr. Patton. I'm Cedric Allen with Steel City Jazz Festival. Uh, I'm sorry. Last year, we were glad to be able to tell you, and I think all of you should have gotten it in your boxes this morning, that we did help raise four point two five million dollars from the twenty-five thousand dollars that you guys did donate to us. For a first year out the box, that's pretty, pretty good. I would say that's a positive impact on your investment. Now, what we did do last year, one of the things we did do, we were able to donate ten thousand dollars to Miles College Scholarship Fund. We're, we're proud of that, you know? And of course, we're needing your support again this year. As Mr. Patton said, we have agreed to whatever that amount is, our books are open, we have no problem with it, to that twenty percent back to the city. Of course, in order for us to even get new monies in, as we like to call it, it takes money to make money, you know? And right now, at this point, guys, if we don't have your support, then, you know, it's gonna be an uphill battle because we're bringing people from all over America. And I'm not just exaggerating that. We had a guy coming in from the Philippines. We'll back it up to you when he gets here. That's pretty impressive, I must say. We're, we're advertising our great city of Birmingham over seven different states. Thirty-three, forty is one of our partners. We're, we're thankful, Alabama Power and the City of Birmingham, the mayor's office. We, we pray in that, and we pray in that the city council donates twenty-five thousand to us again. Now, economic impact, that's five million dollars if we bring in Hoover and Homewood. That's pretty impressive, guys, for twenty-five grand. I know we're hurting. We're trying to do our part. As a matter of fact, something good does come out of West End. I'm out of West End. My brother Dwight is out of West End. And Mrs. Tyson is out of West End. So there is some good that does come out of West End. But guys, I take this personal, I take this serious because I am a byproduct of this great city. So it's not about us making money at this moment, but I'm gonna stop and let Dwight kinda just bring you up to speed.
Before you do that, Cedric, let me just say, the reason why I raised the, the issue here, not that I had a problem with it, but just trying to realize, because I understood that, yeah, last year was a great lineup and, and actually, if it wasn't for the rain, I think you probably could have made it. Because I was told that it was, it was a wonderful event. And so I'm just trying to see, because I've seen us do this before, is be a little more lenient with, with events that really have a real economic impact to the city. And so that's why I raised the issue. Uh, I don't know if twenty percent, you know, the fact that you all lost money last year seems to me that the city oughta just, you know, give a little grace. Uh, because I understand, I, I just wasn't here.
Yes, sir.
And, but I, but I understood by those who went, they had a great, great time. And we have to do some of these kind of things, outdoors thing. They do it in Chattanooga, uh, and, and it's been a great, huge success.
Yes, sir.
So, um, but I'm just wondering if ten, if twenty percent is a little bit more than what we need to, I don't know, that, that's in the administration, what's the name? But I, I like to see us kinda cut that in half so that they can realize and be successful because I believe that this could catch on. And this could be the place, you know, this could be New Orleans Jazz Festival, you know? Because it has grown to just that, uh, New Orleans. But we want the Birmingham Jazz Festival. Yeah, so that's my comments on that. Mr. Patton, it's, it's for you all to consider.
Counselor Abbott?
Yeah, and I just wanted to ask, how many tickets have y'all sold so far? You said you were bringing people from all these different places. How do you know that?
Well, Ms. Abbott, I'm glad you asked that question. The company that we use, Tix, they have an extensive campaign for you to break it down per zip code. I mean, you can really get real, real technical to down to the minute details. So right now, we have seven hundred and, uh, seven hundred and two zip codes that are totally represented. Five hundred and twelve are different zip codes. So then you start breaking it down demographic-wise to whatever your needs are, that's how. So to answer your question, we have about forty-five hundred tickets that are sold already. That's how we're able to move forward at this point.
Forty-five hundred. And then the next question is for Mr. Patton. Um, what is the cost of these in-kind services and whose budget are they coming out of?
They're coming out the mayor's budget.
They're coming out of the mayor's budget. And what is the value of the services?
Uh, it could run as much as a hundred thousand dollars.
What? A hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
This is for security?
Police security, fencing, uh, what else are you all asking for? Printing?
So we're doing everything. Cause a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars?
We, we, we are assisting them. And police is for two days, two and a half days, I think. And we're talking about a show that starts on Friday at six o'clock. Is that about right? And goes to about eleven. Uh, we're talking about a show starting at twelve noon or one o'clock on, eleven o'clock Saturday and goes to about eleven. So that's, that's twelve hours of security there. And all of it's based on the projected crowd.
Thank you.
Can I add a couple of things?
Thank you, Parker. Did, did we do this for City Stages? We did, then we, we gave, we gave them money and they ran off, didn't we? So, let, let me, let me say this. Now, we, we did it for City Stages.
Barbara Sports.
Barbara Sports, uh, for the Harris's Festival. What? And I went to the concert, and this has absolutely nothing to do with me coming out of West End. I, I like to occupy my time. I work like a dog in, in the city of Birmingham. I leave, I want, I wanna, they, they relax sometimes too. And we gave City Stage the Rudy and the Tootie. And we got nothing in return. No twenty percent or nothing, no scholarship money, no nothing. Then the last time we gave them some money, they took the caboose and ran. So where would we get the money from and can we afford it and give these young men an opportunity? And I got a doctor's report.
In, in consideration, Counsel, I'd just like to add, we really hope that you guys support this and probably weigh the fees. I will bring it to your attention that Steel City has the potential of being one of the top three jazz festivals in the United States. Right now, if you look at the top five, we've, we have exceeded the top three of those. So what I'm saying to you is, this is our sec, second annual. Last year, we spent over a quarter million dollars. And you're talking about that came out of our pockets. Nobody gave us anything. So first of all, we put some skin in the game. When we came out of here and we put those folks in the park, we were not even sure that five people were gonna show up, let alone a hundred and fifty, let alone twenty thousand. So having said that, you know, you can have guys coming in and funk fast, we're local. We've been here all our lives. You want promoters, we right here. We take our own money. We give back to the community. So when you start considering the funds that we're asking for, people are hungry for it. As my brother indicated, it's very specific. We can track down to the zip code that people are buying these tickets because most of them are bought online. People are coming from all over. We had five thousand people come from Atlanta last year. This year, it'll probably be more like seven thousand. I guarantee you, within the next three years, Birmingham will be the designated place for jazz festivals. Right now, you got Seabreeze that's in Florida. They having problems down there. Chances are, in the next couple of years, that festival goes away. Those folk are going to migrate somewhere. We are primed to take advantage of that. Now, if you didn't come downtown on last year, all of the hotels in this vicinity were booked. I had to even go to two eighty to get a room. So what we're saying is, a hundred thousand dollars, we generate it based on the chamber, five million, it's a no-brainer. Nobody's knocking on our doors to knock down the city of Birmingham to do business. We put our own money up, so we put skin in the game. So what we ask you all to do, and here's another thing, we don't wanna just talk about this year. It's a shame that we're talking about Steel City a month from now. It's about to happen. We need to be talking about twenty sixteen. We need a commitment from you all today to do twenty sixteen. We can make this festival as big as you all want to. We increased our budget this year by another seventy-five thousand dollars. If we had a commitment from you all for twenty sixteen, we can bring anybody, anybody you want, as big as artists you want. But if we don't get a commitment from you all now, and we're thirty days out from the festival, it's just not, you know, business friendly. I know most of you been a part of the community for a long time. Guys, we have a great opportunity to really make a significant impact for entertainment that's very well needed in this city. Thank you.
All right.
My last question, Mr.
Go ahead.
Yeah, well, and.
Second time.
Second time. But, you know, I've sit here and we've supported, and I don't recall, um, these other folk coming down had to explain anything with barbers or anything, you know, we just, we did it, you know? And matter of fact, we got three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that, in that, that's, that skin and, and that gang. And so, um, I think it's minute. Um, I think we need to support you all to whatever tune the mayor suggests us and what have you. Uh, I think it's worth it, quite frankly. I like to see, you know, we oughta be growing some folk too. And we done grew Zoom, we done grew Brunos and what have you. It's time us to, to grow Cedric and, and his group, okay? Steel City Jazz, it, it needs to grow. So, and he here, he deliver our mail every day. Amen. So I, I want my mail.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I want it on time. Thank you, sir. All right.
You have a motion?
Mr. President, I, I move that we send this to our committee of the whole meeting on this Friday at five P.M.
You have a second? Second?
Second.
All right, we're ready to vote. And let me say this before we vote, that I do support the event. I went last year, it was great. But there are some questions that need to be answered. I believe we can get those answered in our committee of the whole meeting on Friday. Questions that were raised in this meeting, so we can take it back up hopefully next Tuesday. All right, we're ready to vote, Mr. Clerk.
All right, one second. All right, that vote should be up, Mr. Chair.
That item passes. We'll take it up this Friday and be, hopefully be back next Tuesday. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
We got twenty-six. Item twenty-six. That's Peak Software?
Item twenty-six?
Yes, sir. Item twenty-six, a resolution approving the appointment of Peak Software Systems Incorporated Sandy Utah and in Mount Nite to exceed eleven thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars to provide software installation and configuration, onsite training, and ongoing support for the Parks and Recreation Department in accordance with section three dash one dash seven of the Birmingham City Code and authorize the mayor to execute the appointment on behalf of the city.
Move the item.
Hoyt, Parker?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Um, on this item, I do not recall that this has come to budget and finance unless it came a really long time ago and they just took a while to get it on the agenda. So if, I mean, I asked Dr. Lee, it hasn't been to committee.
Okay. Do you wanna prefer it to budget and finance?
Well. That would, that would be my motion to send it to committee.
All right. Abbott? Lundey?
That vote should be up.
That item, refer it to budget and finance. Next item, Mr. Clerk. Should be our speakers, right?
Forty?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Item forty.
Item forty, a resolution of intent in support of UAB Athletics Department.
Mr. Clerk, that, that's, okay. This item that I presented to the council is a res, resolution of intent to support UAB and specifically UAB Athletics. As you all know, the, the, um, UAB and its partners are, have embarked upon a fundraising effort. And this is a resolution that, that I've spoken to the mayor about and is willing to commit, we've committed in the past, we have given them in the past two hundred and fifty thousand dollars around approximately that amount for tickets. But this would increase our, or double our commitment, well, not necessarily double it, it would be an intent to double our commitment should the program be reinstated, football, rifling, and bowling. So this is a resolution of intent. Doesn't permit us to do anything unless we come back and they, you know, of course, we have to talk about it again. So we don't even know right now if that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we've already committed will be in this year's upcoming budget because it was all just for football. So.
Mr. President?
Yes, and, and one other thing I'll say, this is something similar that we did, it's very, it's very similar to the resolution that we did when we passed the resolution to support, with an intent to support the World Games.
Well, I, I thought we, but I guess this is monetary because I thought we had already passed a resolution that we were gonna support the football.
We did.
Um, and then I, I guess, you know, from the law department, I just need to understand what makes this different than what the council has tried to do in supporting other entities within the, the city of Birmingham.
This right, go ahead.
Yeah, cause they, they seem to be quite selective about different things, so I just wanna know. I'm real close to writing. Go ahead.
Would, would you please explain to me a little bit more of what you're asking me to do?
Well, we've been told in recent that we can't give to nonprofits and different folk and what have you. So I wanna know why this is different than what the council has, has been a matter of academics on this council since I've been here. And now all of a sudden, you know, we saying, and you all making judgment calls, and I say judgment call because I have yet to see a stature to sustain what it is that you all are now employing as a law department. So I just wanna know what makes this item different?
Well, the, the main thing that makes this item different is, it is not a grant of any funds.
Right.
It's an expression of intention.
But it would, but it, but it would inevitably resolve into a monetary if in fact, UAB football, and I support it, and I think we need to buy more tickets. You know, that's one of my concerns. Uh, you know, that's one of my concerns is the fact that, uh, we need, we need to do more because U A B has a tremendous impact on this community uh, from an economic standpoint. And I think it'd be prudent, uh, of this council to support U A B football because it makes a difference. Uh, and I'm one of those person who have not gone to a lot of games, but perhaps I need to go to some more games. Maybe folks see me, they might show up. I don't know. They might run, I don't know. But, uh, but at least we're, we're tempted to do that. But I just wanna see some consistency, uh, Mr. President, in terms of what we, uh, are getting out of the, the law department. And I got another issue I'm gonna bring up later on, um, because we need some clarity. But, uh, this is fine. I'm gonna go ahead and vote for this intent, um, and, uh, and just, uh, be mindful, uh, what we're doing here and so that, you know, we get some continuity. I think that's, that would be the word of the day. Continuity. Yes, indeed.
Thank you. Counselor Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, last night, I signed my own personal resolution of intent for U A B to the tune of twenty-five hundred dollars. It's not a lot of money in the grand scheme of things. It's certainly nowhere near twenty-five hundred thousand. But I think that, you know, U A B's, the, the football is just the tip of the iceberg of what the intent is to do to U A B by this board of trustees. So I think that, you know, sending a message that we're supportive of U A B football is basically saying, we don't like your plan to do what you wanna do to U A B. So, uh, I feel very strongly about that. You know, I'm not an enormous sports fan. I don't go run into the field every time somebody has a game. But I'm supportive of things that are important to the city of Birmingham, and U A B is important. And football is just a, you know, I guess it's a symbol. But, uh, I never thought I'd be giving any money to anybody's football program. But I made that pledge, and of course, if they don't bring back football, they can forget it.
Yeah.
But, uh, that's the same thing that I think this resolution of intent says. If there's no football, our intent is not to give you any money.
Yep.
So I think it's important. I think sometimes you have to put your money where your mouth is, even if it hurts. And, um, and five hundred thousand dollars would be, I mean, we'd have to scurry around to find that money. But we scurry around and find money for lots of things, and we can do it for this if, if the situation is right. So, thank you.
Thank you, and just one other thing. You're right, it's, it's well beyond, uh, football and the relationship that the city of Birmingham is far beyond just the football program. But a football program at U A B in this city is very important to the student, quality of, quality of life, and so many other things that, that impact, uh, the experience and the university here in the city of Birmingham. So it's important for us, I believe, to at least show our support. Um, but we, and we have many other things, other opportunities to work in collaboration with U A B own, in particular, economic development opportunities and bringing new business to our community, new jobs. But one of the, um, things that I think attracts people to your community is, is especially students to your university as a healthy athletics program, and in, in the South, particularly football. And so, um, I hope that, that, um, at least we will go on record as saying we support U A B football and, and, and we support the athletics program overall. Uh, so, and, and we look forward to meeting with Dr. Watts as well. All right.
Mr. President, if I could say one other thing. I know that we have a number of people absent today. Um, but I can definitely tell you the counselors, Rafferty and Tyson, are enormous U A B supporters, even though they're not here. I can't speak for Counselor Scales, but they've been at all the meetings and been very vocal. And, um, I think that the council, I think we could safely say that we're a hundred percent behind U A B.
Agreed. Counselor Scales is too.
Just because we're not all here doesn't mean we're not supportive.
Thank you. Ms. Clerk, we're ready to vote.
Um, motion, I'm sorry. Motion.
I move approval.
Abbott Parker?
Okay, uh, voting should be open. Counselor Hoyt? That vote should be up, Mr. President.
That item passes unanimously. Uh, next item should be all the new business, Ms. Clerk?
That's correct.
All right, let's move to suspend the rules for our speakers.
Second.
I'll in favor, let it be known by saying, uh...
All right.
All opposed?
All right, first speaker is...
Willie Jenkins.
Mr. Jenkins.
I'd like to the mayor, uh, mayor, uh, and the city council. And, um, I'd like to, uh, announce that, uh, uh, Mr. Parker, that leading, leader, Norma Connor. We had Miss, uh, Reverend Connor Mutter funeral yesterday, and I need to let her, this, that, I just wanna, my prayers go out to Marvin Connor and the Old Street Baptist Church, uh, family. She was well-known at Old Street Baptist Church. Also, the men of praise, uh, city council, will be at Old Street on the Fourth Sunday and May. Fourth Sunday and May, uh, Old Street Baptist Church. The men of praise, we're gonna be practicing Wednesday, so we getting ready for the, uh, Men's Day, the Fourth Sunday and May, May. And, uh, also, uh, council, they want you to, uh, there's a singing bill over there, Mr., Mr. Parker. They, they want you, you got in touch with them? Oh, okay, they want you to work on, they were telling me they want you to work on that, you know. Uh, and also, I would like to announce that Carver High School getting ready for the reunion this year. The mighty Carver High School getting ready for the reunion. We gonna have a dance. We'll let y'all know where the, uh, it gonna be coming up this year. So we gonna, we looking forward for that. And also, the athletic football banquet gonna be coming Saturday. I mean, Thursday, Mr. Parker, at Carver High School, this Thursday, athletic, best, I mean, uh, football banquet. Also, Mr. Parker, Whistler Chapel having their pastor anniversary this coming Sunday, I need to let her for the, this coming Sunday at, uh, Whistler Chapel having their pastor anniversary. And I'd like to say, uh, wish y'all would come out to the, um, men of praise, um, um, this coming Fourth Sunday and May. And also, the breakfast, we gonna have a breakfast, Mr. Parker. And I think gonna start it, I exactly don't know what time it gonna start. And, uh, uh, Galilee Pastor, uh, he gonna be our speaker, the pastor of Galilee Baptist Church. He gonna be our guest speaker for Men's Day. And I would like to invite all y'all to come, Coonan Mayor and District Four Collegeville to come out. And, uh, I wanna say a wonderful job you did for the, uh, breaking ground, the whole mayor and city council for the, uh, broke ground for the, uh, District Collegeville. What a wonderful job. It's gonna, it gonna turn out, you know, the, the overpass and the swimming pool and everything gonna be looking good when that process come, 'cause I know Collegeville is looking for that, you know. District Four is looking for a better, uh, Collegeville. And, and, and Lord, I hope we have, uh, peoples in, uh, in our city will get better and stop the crime. You know, we had that service at my church, uh, Saturday. Uh, Cookie Brown, uh, song, my prayers go out to Cookie Brown song from Old Street Baptist Church. And that's all I, uh, I'd like to say.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Brenda Dickerson.
Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Dr. Brenda J. Dickerson. I live at twelve fifteen thirty-first Street South. I am the president of the Citizens Coalition for a Better Birmingham. The eyes of the nation and the world were recently focused on Ber- on Baltimore, Maryland. Many of the pundits, political prognosticators, and elected officials were quick to suggest that the Baltimore uprising was all about Freddie Gray. I submit that Mr. Gray's death was the straw that broke the camel's back. Baltimore, like Birmingham, has many neighborhoods that suffer from neglect, indifference, high unemployment, reduced life expectancy, staggering poverty. Many of the Baltimore protesters felt that they were doomed to live in a city that does not care. Birmingham, like Baltimore, same thing. Too much hopelessness, despair, and there's far too little accountability, transparency, and disclosure from city officials. A few weeks ago, I was distributing the Citizens Coalition Newsletter, The City News. A young black male yelled out and asked if he, if I had left his newsletter on his car windshield. Without trepidation, I approached the car and said, yes, I had done that. I put my head in the car and I said, did you guys read this newsletter? And they were all joking and laughing about it. And I said, they asked me, what is this newsletter about? And I said, it's about the work of the mayor and the city council. And they said, we don't like the mayor. And I said to them, who is the mayor? We don't know. Well, how do you like, how do you not like somebody that you, you don't know? And then I said to them, where is my newsletter that I gave you? And they had balled it up, crumpled it up. And I said, pull it out and read it to me. They all laughed and they joked about it. And I said, I am serious. Open it and read it. The driver of the car could not read the newsletter. And they all laughed about it. And I said to the kid in the back, these, these young men were eighteen to twenty-one. I said to the young man in the back, you're doing all this laughing. You read it. He could not read that letter. Not one of those young men, there were five of them, not one of them could read. Not one. That is devastating. I don't know if you all understand that. That is devastating. Five young men in a car who cannot read. I stood there and said to them...
Can you wrap it up?
What exactly do you expect to get out of life if you can't read? There was no response. Do you strive for a better life for our children as, in this city as our elected officials? Do our children deserve a better life? A life of opportunity and hope versus despair and disillusion? To know better is to do better. The Citizens Coalition believes that Birmingham can be a better city for all of its residents. The Citizens Coalition urges that the mayor and city council work to improve the quality of life for our children. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Reverend John Davis.
Reverend Davis?
Mayors Office, Council, Councilperson?
Sports citizens.
I'm here to advocate for, uh...
State your name for the...
Oh, my name is John Henry Davis Junior. I'm senior pastor of Wynwood Baptist Church, twenty-nine seventy-four Wynwood Road. Hello, John. I'm here to advocate for my, my students at my school, parishioners at the church. Uh, we have a problem behind our church, uh, the, the project going on called the Calico Wynwood Ditch Covering Project. Uh, it's been an ongoing project that started on the Calico side, worked its way up to Wynwood Road, and now it's worked over on the other side of Wynwood Road toward our property. Uh, part of, uh, what I'm saying is that I have no complaints about the project because the part of the project that they have done is excellent. They closed it in, but what is the byproduct of that is that now the water is more focused and it has more pressure and it runs a whole lot faster. And it's washing out the sewer, it's washing out on the pro- our property. And we, we got, we're gonna have another, uh, issue with mosquitoes, infestation. And when the mosquitoes are coming, and then we have the riprap there with the rats and the mice in there, and then the snakes in there, then we got a, a growing situation where the plants grow up because of, it's, it's highly watered there. Then we got a place for the, those big pointy-eyed dog. They're kinda like a combination between a, a dog and a... Some kinda wild, uh, dog-looking thing, like a...
Wolf.
No, it's not a wolf, a fox-like thing, but they're wild. And we got children out there that play, and they're at risk. Mosquitoes all over the place, that's at risk. And we, our school is operating five days a week, church, six days a week. And, uh, we, we need for you to consider that, the covering of that entire project. That ditch needs to be completely covered. I'm also advocating for, uh, my neighbors, the F O P, the, uh, the other businesses in that area. And, uh, eventually, we'll be meeting together and, and the people on the other side of the ditch, uh, Highway seventy-nine will also be interested in coming out here, talk to you about it too. We're not here, I'm not here to complain. I'm just here to give you a report on what's taking place. Good work so far, but some of the work needs to be done. Somebody needs to come out there when it's raining and put their eyes on that project and see that water fly down there and see it eat up the rest of, of the soil. See where the, some of the city work has taken our, our riprap, and it's gone now. We paid ten thousand dollars for that riprap and it's gone. So, and we had to do it by, by permit. And so, I'm kinda frustrated because I got, uh, we, uh, the, the neighborhood, uh, association meets at our church. Been meeting in our church for years now. And, uh, as I, our thoughts were that they were working toward, uh, mitigating this issue. And I think they have been doing it, but it's been going a little too slow.
Can you wrap it up? Your time is up.
Okay, all right. You get my flavor.
Gotcha.
You get my point. We need help. And we, we don't need the project to keep going little pieces anymore. We just need to finish. That's all we asking for, finish on the project.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Cedric Hatcher.
Uh, good morning. My name is Cedric Hatcher, residing in twenty-three hundred Fifth Avenue North. I first wanna give honor where it's placed at this morning. Wanted to give honor to the mayor. On Thursday, he came out there with us in Smithfield, where those three young men lost their lives at. And he came, and he was one of the speakers. And I think the speech he gave was heartfelt. I think it was sincere. I brought home, I really do think so. I think I got a little gift called the sermon inside of me. I know what's fake and what's real, and what's good and what's evil and so forth. You know what I mean? And one of the number one gifts a Christian or preacher should desire is the gift of the sermon, after the gift of love. You know what I mean? Should be the gift of the sermon. And so he came out and spoke, and you know what I mean? He said he was gonna be there for the community, and we're gonna hold you accountable for that. Mr. Mayor, we just gonna pretend he sitting over there. We gonna hold you accountable for what you said in front of that microphone. We gonna check back with you now, and we gonna see as you gonna do what you told all them young black people out there, what you was gonna do. And so the next day, that Friday, y'all had a conference down here called My Brother's Keeper, Am I My Brother's Keeper, something like that. And someone called and asked me, said, "Bro, say you'll come down to the city hall." Said they having a meeting, man, about My Brother's Keeper. I said, "Sure, I'll be down there." What time it gonna start? And they told me. And on my way down here, in the hallway, one of the guys from round the corner, round there, they got a little program me over, round there, said, "Bro, say where you going?" As if I didn't belong there. You know what I mean? And I ain't sitting there, you know what I mean? A lot of doors gonna get shut on me. I don't worry about them doors, I want them windows that Malachi talk about over there. Prove me, try me, and see what I open up, the windows of heaven. You know what I mean? I think it's just two doors around our house. But walk around that house, boy, it's windows all around that house, bro, Steve. I want some windows. I'm getting on in there, don't you start this morning. Yeah, now, 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 let me tell you about that program, y'all. This is all I gotta say about that program, y'all. Most of them guys that was in front, they come around, they ain't never throw rice out of the way. So, how they finna go in some streets and try to talk to some street people? A robber, a drug dealer pimp, and gangsters and stuff like that. You know what I mean? Don't go out there if you ain't been a known it. You remember them two men in the Bible trying to catch that demon out their man? They said Jesus and Paul. They said, "We know them." But they whooped them men out their clothes. You know what I mean? And so, I know you got your little degrees on the wall, but you better get something out of it. You can't build a house now until you got all your tools. You need a cobbler, an electrician, a plumber. You need a landscaper. You know what I mean? You got your little books and all that kind of stuff because you ain't got some money. So, come on there, put this program together. But you need some help. You need some help now if you're gonna go in them streets. Because you might be appointed, but you ain't been a known it. You might got some amazing grades, but you ain't had no disgrace. You look good in your glory, but have you had a story? You might have started a ministry, but ever you ever had some misery? You might have a testimony, but ever had a test? Paul's in jail. Shadrackin was in the, in the firing fire. The one where his blood bled for twelve years. Yeah, you know, a lager laid in the ground there. You know what I mean? They went through what they went through. That's why we hear their story, y'all. But when I don't act like you, I don't walk like you, I don't talk like you, you don't wanna be bothered, bro, say. I'm not, I need to act like you 'cause I'm a peculiar person.
Next speaker.
W.A. Casey. I think he's gone.
Alright. We're ready for all the new business, Councilor.
Thank you. I think I have Counsel Tyson's announcements as well. This is for our neighborhood meetings. This is this Saturday, May the sixteenth, the North Tilly Hill, Tittysville, will meet at the Tittysville Library at eleven o'clock. Next Wednesday, May the twentieth, Graymont, will meet at the Smithfield Library at four o'clock. The PIC Committee will meet tomorrow. It says March, but this has got to be May, May thirteenth at four o'clock in Conference Room D and E. This Friday, May the fifth, they're having a Black Women's Roundtable Youth Summit at the We Know Not High School. Female students from We Know Not Parker and J.O. will be in attendance to receive a life-changing advice and information from our state legislators, judges, and teachers. And First Lady, Dr. Sharon Bell, will be in attendance and will give words of encouragement. Our future speaker will be actress-producer Vivica Fox. And that will be on Saturday the sixteenth. And she says, "Come and join us on day of service at the Woodland Park on Saturday." She said, "My office has gotten calls about people running the stop sign at the corner of Twentieth Street South and Center Street South. And the residents have said that they're at the school. Children are walking and cars are coming. And so, in other words, the cars are moving too fast. They run the stop sign and it endangers our young folk." So, my announcements, Mr. President, is the Bellevue Heights Neighborhood Association meets tonight, May the twelfth, two thousand and fifteen, at six thirty at Brown Elementary. Central Park Neighborhood Association will meet Thursday, May fourteenth, at six o'clock at Five Points West Library. My staff will be participating in awards program. Oh, that was on last Friday, Crystal Ray School, Catholic School. And Ashley Greer won our five hundred dollar scholarship. And so, we say kudos to Ashley, and we're gonna bring those scholarship recipients to the, to the council pretty soon. And the next public safety meeting will be May eighteenth in these conference room chambers, I mean, this city hall council chambers on third floor. Mr. President, I have passed out to thank just about all my colleagues who are here, the Alabama Bid Law and what it says in respect to contracts for which competitive bidding is not required. And if you would note that I have highlighted number five, it says, "Contract for fiscal or financial advice or service, fiscal service, shall not be, does not have a requirement of bidding." And I think I shared this with, with Judge Cook on last week. Again, we need continuity. And Mr. Patton, I'm gonna give you a copy of this, but I took out time last night and read through the whole code and, and noted that where we get this fifteen thousand dollars from, I wouldn't pay for somebody fifteen thousand dollars to manage five, fifty thousand dollars. That would not work for me. And I don't think it'd work for any of us. Then, cause then, that's, that's capricious, I would think. So, and I don't employ any of that. But I do want to say, Mr. Patton, we want some consistency. And, you know, and if I read it, and I'm a layperson and understood it, then we got twenty lawyers down there, and some of them got master's degrees and everything else, then why did they read it and understand it to this degree? And so, that's why I can understand why we had to bid out for fiscal agent services. And it doesn't have to be bid out according to the law. And, and I just want to say in the future, I need them to quote statues to me. So, we get understanding, we have a clear understanding. Because what I don't want to do is get tied up in political stuff. Because that's what I'm seeing now. And I don't like it. Judge Cook is not here today, but we want some continuity. I've never seen it as fragmented as I have experienced this last year. And it's not always me. Cause when I speak, I think, I hope I speak for the- And it's not always me, because when I speak, I think, I hope I speak for the